Start us.
Sure.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Duncan?
Here.
Councilmember Cartwright?
Here.
Councilmember Clark Kretz?
Here.
Councilmember Baker?
Here.
Mayor Nysley?
Here.
Okay, now we need to get adoption of the agenda.
So move.
I'll second.
All right, roll call.
Councilmember Baker?
Aye.
Councilmember Clark Kretz?
Yes.
Councilmember Duncan?
Aye.
Councilmember Cartwright?
Aye.
Mayor Nysley?
Yes.
Okay. Under recommendations and proclamations, they're listed under the consent item. So now we'll go to matters of interest to the council members? No? Nope? Okay, town manager report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So I've got a couple things. First, council knows this, and I think most people in the community know this, but the council approved a negotiated settlement regarding the proposed Loomis-Cosco last week. Settlement agreement has now been executed by all the parties in the ongoing litigation, so it was executed by Rockland, Costco, Citizens for Responsible Growth, and the town of Loomis. The terms of the deal were disclosed during the, at the end of the closed session on Thursday night, have been posted to Facebook. They're also listed in the town manager report here. Folks want to see that, it's on the back counter as you walk in on the table. So that settlement agreement stays all the litigation until the revised site plan and use permit are approved by Loomis, at which point the litigation's dropped. Those actions are slated for the October 25th Planning Commission meeting, and then coming to council for the final action on November 8th. If everything stays on track, the store should be open for the holiday season next year, and I got an update from Merrill that they would actually be open hopefully by the end of summer, so as early as September. And then staff, obviously, is continuing to process onsite improvement plans and doing as much as we can do to get them done. They're at the top of the line, top of the food chain, all the euphemisms you could possibly throw at it, so. Next up, Hidden Grove Project. The town deemed the application complete for that project back in July. On September 26th, the town declared the project inconsistent with the general plan. There's, the determination letter is on the town website, and we're in the process now of waiting for the developer to bring back a revised plan that is consistent with the general plan. We assume that that'll be coming within a month or so. It's not, it's not like their plan is hugely inconsistent, but there are inconsistencies that need to be addressed. Do you want to talk about the slurry seal stuff, instead of me trying to wait to, I'll turn it over to Merrill for the slurry seal update?
Sure. So, exciting news, we have our slurry seal project. It's going to be starting next week. We thought it would start Friday, but they had a delay on one of their other projects, so we're re-notifying all the impacted residents. And it'll be three days, it's about five miles of streets, and it actually catches, I drove the whole city. So this catches all the streets that are at a point where a slurry seal will help. It's kind of like a coat of paint, it doesn't offer any structural strength to the roadways, and then the next paving season, we're going to look to do more rubber chip seals, like we did on Laird, so.
And then lastly, I've been notified by our esteemed planning director, Mary Beth Van Boris, that she's retiring at the end of the year. So her last day here at Town Hall will actually be November 18th. She's done a great job of studying our planning department these past four years, and then, most importantly, your friendship, professionalism, and sunny outlook will be greatly missed at Town Hall. Merrill will miss eating lunch with her in the conference room daily. I'm in the process of identifying her replacement, and I'll be making an announcement for that within the next couple of weeks. So that's all that I have. I can answer questions if you have questions.
Any questions? No?
We'll need to open it up for public comment, if anybody wants to have public comment on it as well.
Does anybody have a public comment on the town manager's report? Is there anybody on Zoom?
Nope.
All right. We'll move on to the Loomis Library and Community Learning Center librarians' report.
All right, good evening, everyone. So first off, I wanted to start by talking about this. Hopefully, everyone received one in the mail. If you didn't, we have more copies than we know what to do with at the library, but there are also some on the table out front. Thank you to whoever did that, I forgot to bring some, so that was nice. There is a bunch of stuff going on at the library, which is sort of normal these days, so. First of all, we, of course, have our storytime every Friday at 10:30, but in addition to that, we are now offering every Wednesday a weekly storytime in Japanese. So it's a fully Japanese storytime, it's great for kids to be exposed to foreign languages, and the storytime reader is a native speaker, and she goes really slow, and has helpful little pictures and stuff so that kids can pick up on words as she's reading. And then there's a craft offered afterwards, so that's going to be every Wednesday at 10:30. We are also trying to offer on a monthly basis, and this month it will be tomorrow at 10:30, from 10:30 to 11:30, a digital library information hour. So that's a class targeted really towards seniors, about how to use our Hoopla and Libby apps, which are our ebook apps, and we go step by step, including how to download the apps to your phone, so, or your device, whatever it may be. So that's going to be tomorrow from 10:30 to 11:30, and like I said, we do plan to offer that on a monthly basis. Also tomorrow, we have Girls Who Code from 3:30 to 4:45, and that's going to be every Wednesday through November 16th, and that class is still, there are still spots available for anyone who is interested. On October 15th, we have a Master Gardeners Workshop on composting from 10:30 to 11:30, and also on October 15th, we have origami for beginners. They're going to be doing ghosts and bats this year, from 10:30 to 11:30 this year, this month. And then on October 18th, we have our Manga Club from 4:30 to 5:30. On October 20th, we have landscape painting for the artistically challenged, and so that's going to be a really fun class. It's going to be from 5:00 to 8:00 PM, so a little bit outside of our normal hours, but it should be a lot of fun. And on October 22nd, we have Read to a Dog from 10:30 to 11:30. Also on October 22nd, Ukulele Strum Along, that's been going great, going strong, really a lot of fun. And that will be from 3:30 to 4:30. And then the week of October 25th, so October 25th through the 29th, we have our Friends of the Library Book Sale, that's every day that week, Tuesday through Saturday. It's going to be from 10:00 to 4:00, except for on Saturday, it will be from 10:00 to 3:00. And the friends have just an enormous amount of books that they are hoping to sell, and so anyone who's interested, and like I said, it's all day pretty much while the library's open. And then we're going to end the month on October 29th with a Halloween Walk Through a Book and Craft, which is a fun activity for kids to do. We encourage everyone to come dressed in their Halloween costume. And that's from 10:30 to 1:00. It is not, you know, continuous from 10:30 to 1:00, it is self-directed, so you can show up at any point in time between those times. And then I did want to mention our Spice Club. It is on the same Tuesday as council, so people would have to make the hard decision to go to Spice Club instead of come here. But I wanted to let everyone know that it has become so popular that it is now requiring advanced registration, and there is a waitlist. So to call the library as soon as you decide that that's something you want to do to get on that waitlist. And I also wanted to mention that this Thursday, Deborah, who runs the Spice Club, will be actually going to the Sacramento Public Library to do a Spice Club for their staff, so hopefully their staff can then pick up Spice Club at the Sacramento Public Library. So we're very excited about that. And that's it.
That's great. Does anybody have any questions? All right. Thank you. And Loomis Chamber of Commerce update?
All righty, thank you. So the, I guess, first part would be Eggplant Festival this year feels like it was a good success. You probably saw us, maybe not, you didn't notice all of our little feet swimming under the water there, but we are planning a debrief with some of the local businesses and some of the vendors to discuss what they liked about it and what we might be able to make better for next year. Frank, our chamber CEO, has resigned as of last week, so the board, which is me and the rest of our board members, are meeting on Thursday to discuss how we are going to move forward and the plan to move forward with that. We are going to be opening it back up to hire someone to replace him, but as we're doing that, we're going to make some adjustments to make sure we can fill those shoes in the meantime. October 19th, the local chambers, Roseville, Loomis, Auburn, and Lincoln, will be hosting in conjunction with Placer Valley Tourism, a business summit on October 19th with local leaders, I think Sean will get to be there, on one of the panels, so that should be a very exciting event. If you want to get tickets, those are available online, and it's going to be at Bayside. I'm not sure which Bayside is, Roseville? I'll go online, and you can, and you can purchase tickets online. And then lastly, last week, the chamber co-hosted with the League of Women Voters, a candidate forum, right here at the Train Depot. The League of Women Voters has posted that video on their website and their Facebook page, so if you get a chance to check that out, we did have some council members, or possible future council members, there for the forum as well. That's about it. Any questions?
No, I just want to say you did amazing, the committee did an amazing job on this eggplant festival, and I heard only good things. It was great, you ordered great weather, it was fun.
It was fun.
And I also wanted to thank you, the chamber and the League of Women Voters for hosting that candidacy night.
Yes, yes. Thank you so much, Chris.
So the Placer Valley Tourism thing is at Bayside Blue Oaks Campus at 10,000 Allentown Drive in Roseville.
Thank you, Sean.
All right. Now, this is the time for a public comment on items that are not on the agenda.
Hi, my name is Pam Blake. I've lived here for 37 years, and I made a comment at the last town council meeting about how the town council, it's a nonpartisan job, you should be running as an independent. And I was here in person for the forum, I also watched it afterwards for an hour and a half, and I did take a bunch of notes. And again, here we go. I didn't know who Stephanie Youngblood was until she was appointed to the Planning Commission. I don't know who Amanda Cortez is, she moved here in 2004. I haven't seen Amanda or Stephanie, and again, at a town council meeting. I also, what happened was when it came down to who's funding your, you know, campaign, Stephanie, you know, did say she got money from Evangelical PAC and Teresa Doherty, that's fine and dandy, but I looked up the records, and Stephanie got $1,000 from American Council for Evangelicals State PAC. They're in San Rafael. And on my phone here, I also have recommendations of the Republican Party, and the Republican Party is recommending for the town council Amanda Cortez and Stephanie Youngblood. This also happened in 2020 with the Republican Party doing the same thing for Danny Cartwright. Now, when I talked to Stephanie, she said anybody can run for, you know, town council, and that's correct, but I've come to so many of these meetings and not seeing people running for town council and not being here, and again, they're not here. And to say that I'll watch YouTube later is not good enough, you know? You're not up here, you're not participating. The election is next month, and you're not here. And like with Jeff Duncan, when he was rerunning four years ago, he walked up my driveway and he goes, "I know you," and I go, "Yeah, because I attend all these meetings." And when I watched it, there was like 500 and some odd views, you know, for the video, which was really great, but I really hope people pay attention and who they're voting for. And the last thing is for Roger Carroll, I looked at the dispersment report, and I'd like to know how this bill.com works, because I saw PG&E with 39 times, I didn't add it up, but 39 times we paid PG&E in the last month, and so is that automatically paid, or do you look at the PG&E bills and make sure that they're correct before they get paid?
Thank you, Pam, thank you.
Can I say one last thing? Placer County Water, I saw $5,254.91, but I brought it to Sean's attention multiple times about the Lincoln sprinkler, and I want to say last month, you took care of it, Jenny, so thank you very much.
Okay, thanks, Pam. Do we have anybody else in the public?
David Ring, 3486 Delmar. I just want to say, I have one other thing to say, but I do want to say that Jane Clark Kretz and I are also running, so they're, Amanda and Stephanie just got a lot of free prestus there, but I want to say that we're also running. Anyway, the, I had a comment about, I should have mentioned this with the town report, the town manager's report, but I wanted to verify that the cleanup Loomis is still happening in two weeks? Okay, so that's on the 22nd of October? If you want to talk about, okay, excellent, thank you very much.
Thank you, David. All right, anybody else in the audience here? Anybody on Zoom?
Yeah, we have, Miguel, go ahead.
Thank you. One thing I want to bring up is to continue looking about the on-ramp at King and Interstate 80. If you noticed lately, the traffic on Tater Road is getting really bad, and the traffic on Horseshoe Bar is getting not very good either. People need a different way to get in and out of Loomis, and the only option is the King Road on and off ramp. I know there was kind of a committee, but it's kind of not going forward, and I wish the council and the town would pursue that. Thank you.
Thank you, Miguel. Is that it? All right.
One more. Sonia, go ahead.
Hi, after hearing Sean Ribéz's town manager report, I was just kind of curious about the litigation. I know that the town had to go and fix the zoning on the residential parcels because the judge said that the town wasn't following its zoning laws, so I was just curious if what the settlement was that took place and the stays on the litigation, does that also include changing those residentially zoned parcels to include driveways and lighting and landscaping and stuff, or is that like a separate thing with the judge? And I also was curious if there's any kind of status update on the clock tower being repaired. Thank you.
Sean, do you reply back to that, or?
So, the settlement agreement stays all litigation, so the stuff at the appeals court, which was the original cases, plus the recently, the cases ever recently filed on the zoning issue, so all of it has stayed. Once the council approves the site plan on November 8th, all the cases are dropped, everything's dropped. Clock Tower, Dave Struck, our public works director, is putting together a staff report for me that has the estimate of fixing the clock tower, estimate of buying a new clock tower, and then a potential other option that we're looking at. That'll, even to fix a clock tower is not cheap, so, so that's where, that'll probably come back in November, I'm hoping.
All right, thank you, Sean. Is there anybody else on Zoom? All right. So now, this is time, opportunity to comment on the consent calendar. Do we have anybody who wants to comment on the consent calendar on Zoom? No? All right, so then we needed a, a second. Roll call? Yeah, Danny.
Councilmember Baker?
Aye.
Councilmember Cartwright?
Aye.
Councilmember Duncan?
Aye.
Councilmember Clark Kretz?
Yes.
Mayor Nysley?
Yes.
Okay, this time we're going to open a public hearing for the 2022 California Building Code Regulations Ordinance.
So I'm going to actually turn it over to our building official, Josh Pino, and he's going to run the staff report for you all.
Good evening. Before you is the adoption of the 2022 California codes, as they relate to the building. One note, the fire code is within as well, however, the Fire District will further bring some amendments to you as soon as their board adopts the amendments, they'll be bringing the Loomis-specific amendments to you. As mandated by the state, we are to bring these to you and for you to adopt before the beginning of the year 2023. The codes are, we've posted the changes online. The biggest changes to the codes that are coming in 2023 are energy-related. You'll see a lot more mandated battery storage, solar, solar on commercial, everything else as far as amendments to the code, or changes to the code, I should say, are pretty minor. One other thing is going to be that we have adopted, or we're recommending that you adopt some appendix chapters of the code that the state makes it optional, they don't adopt it as far as their adoption, but allows us to do that. And what it does is it makes it easier for the builders and the designers to incorporate stuff into the code that would otherwise not be allowed, or they would have to ask permission to do it. This way, it's in the ordinance, and they can use those sections without having to ask for special permission to do so. Other than that, I'll entertain any questions you have, it's pretty simple, straightforward.
Any questions? No? All right, do we have anybody in the public that has any questions? Anybody on Zoom?
I think, Miguel? Miguel, did you raise your hand?
Yes, I did.
All right.
I had a question on the battery storage. Will it require new residential homes to have battery storage?
It is possible. So the way it works is we, when people design a new building, they go through an energy calculation process, and it's a matter of trading things back and forth to be able to comply with the energy requirements. So, for example, if you put in battery storage, you put in more solar, that kind of stuff, you get more allowances that allow you to build a house a certain way. Batteries are going to be a big deal, you get a lot of credit for that. The other thing that you will get a lot of credit for are electric appliances, i.e. heat pumps and electric water heaters. The codes are moving industry away from gas-fired appliances and more so into the electric mode.
All right.
I don't know if that answers his question, but.
All right, is there anybody else on Zoom?
Nope.
No? Okay, so can I get a motion to, for the recommended staff action?
So move.
I'll second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Baker?
Aye.
Councilmember Cartwright?
Aye.
Councilmember Duncan?
Aye.
Councilmember Clark Kretz?
Yes.
Mayor Nysley?
Yes.
Okay, this time we're going to open a public hearing for the 2022 California Building Code Regulations Ordinance.
So I'm going to actually turn it over to our building official, Josh Pino, and he's going to run the staff report for you all.
Good evening. Before you is the adoption of the 2022 California codes, as they relate to the building. One note, the fire code is within as well, however, the Fire District will further bring some amendments to you as soon as their board adopts the amendments, they'll be bringing the Loomis-specific amendments to you. As mandated by the state, we are to bring these to you and for you to adopt before the beginning of the year 2023. The codes are, we've posted the changes online. The biggest changes to the codes that are coming in 2023 are energy-related. You'll see a lot more mandated battery storage, solar, solar on commercial, everything else as far as amendments to the code, or changes to the code, I should say, are pretty minor. One other thing is going to be that we have adopted, or we're recommending that you adopt some appendix chapters of the code that the state makes it optional, they don't adopt it as far as their adoption, but allows us to do that. And what it does is it makes it easier for the builders and the designers to incorporate stuff into the code that would otherwise not be allowed, or they would have to ask permission to do it. This way, it's in the ordinance, and they can use those sections without having to ask for special permission to do so. Other than that, I'll entertain any questions you have, it's pretty simple, straightforward.
Any questions? No? All right, do we have anybody in the public that has any questions? Anybody on Zoom?
I think, Miguel? Miguel, did you raise your hand?
Yes, I did.
All right.
I had a question on the battery storage. Will it require new residential homes to have battery storage?
It is possible. So the way it works is we, when people design a new building, they go through an energy calculation process, and it's a matter of trading things back and forth to be able to comply with the energy requirements. So, for example, if you put in battery storage, you put in more solar, that kind of stuff, you get more allowances that allow you to build a house a certain way. Batteries are going to be a big deal, you get a lot of credit for that. The other thing that you will get a lot of credit for are electric appliances, i.e. heat pumps and electric water heaters. The codes are moving industry away from gas-fired appliances and more so into the electric mode.
All right.
I don't know if that answers his question, but.
All right, is there anybody else on Zoom?
Nope.
No? Okay, so can I get a motion to, for the recommended staff action?
So move.
I'll second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Baker?
Aye.
Councilmember Clark Kretz?
Yes.
Councilmember Duncan?
Aye.
Councilmember Cartwright?
Aye.
Mayor Nysley?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So we'll move to business. Item 14, code enforcement update.
So I'll ask our code enforcement officer, Lee Holt, to come up, she's going to run through a presentation, give me a second to get it loaded up for you here. If I can remember how to do this.
Good evening. I was just asked to kind of give you guys an update, just, I think, remind everybody, code enforcement is still present in town, so, go ahead. And we cover everything from helping support building with work without permits to unpermitted habitation. It's across the board. It kind of, code enforcement is sort of, I joke around and call it the kitchen sink. Everybody kind of dumps it in and then expects the dishes to be clean when they come back. So, basically, we have a bunch of different things that we're trying to address. The number one and most important thing is life safety issues. Health and safety are a big priority, and some things, people think, oh, that's not an issue. But like doing work without a permit, you maybe have some electrical work, or you've designed something that maybe the load isn't right, and people can get seriously hurt or worse, so. I'm big on having teams, so I sort of joke around. It's sort of like fantasy football. I get to pick my team, so I come to town. Now, Loomis is great because we have a small team in place already, but we work very closely with other departments, building, engineering, finance, public works, planning. And that team approach, it really is how we get stuff done. And can't forget law enforcement as well. So, here's a couple examples. So, people think, oh, you know, my car's just sitting out there or something's going on. Attractive nuisance is basically sort of, if you're a kid walking down the street and you go, oh, that looks kind of cool, and kids can end up getting hurt next. Or it creates blight. Or you have rodent harborage, and it diminishes property values. And property values, if they go down, less money for the coffer for the town to operate, less services, and it can be a very negative spiral. All right, again, building without permit. So, anything where people are doing work that normally would be requiring a permit, and it's real simple, all you got to do is contact the town, hey, I'm thinking about doing this, or I'd like to do that. A lot of times, you know, oh, I'm just going to be painting. Nope, no permit. Oh, what about carpet? Nope, no permit. Oh, I'm going to do some electrical. That may need a permit. So, just understanding just really can help things, but it's a real problem. People think oftentimes, oh, I own it, I can do whatever I want. That's not always quite the case. So, another example, this house actually was completely gutted. They were going to do a remodel, and we caught them in the middle, and so it's on hold till they get the plans in and make sure that it's, when it's done, it's safe. Property maintenance. So, this is out of the, I apologize for the top, the municipal, it kind of goes through the list of what nuisance violations are and just kind of breaks down each of the categories. I definitely have sort of the ones that are common, reoccurring, ones like graffiti aren't really a big problem here. All right, so you have everything from residential, where you have situations like this, this, or this, and then you can even that. Or then you can go to something more like commercial, where same thing, it's property maintenance. In this case, the property owner decided they didn't want to pay for the dumpster anymore, and so people just started throwing stuff in the thing and creating an issue, so. We also are dealing with stuff, environmental issues, so we'll have everything from illegal dumping. People go out, or, you know, that tree was pretty significant in size. Taking out protected trees. This is probably in my top five of things that we're dealing with. A lot of it has to do with the housing situation, but people come, set up, and then are living out of RVs. RVs aren't necessarily designed to be lived out of in a set place. You have waste, you have electrical, you have things that, if you go to an RV park, they're designed for these types of hookups and everything else, but a common residence is not. So, if you notice on the right, at the lower, you can see the septic line going down that was just tapped into the city's line. All right, and just to kind of give you some before and afters, here's a property. We had over two dozen vehicles in a very small residential lot, and now this is what it looks like. We had a commercial case where it's a vacant lot, but somebody decided just to come set up business, no permits, it's not allowed use, and we got it cleaned up. And again, I do want to add that while I am the person that has the bullseye on my chest, it's a team effort. It takes working with other partners in the community to do these things. This kind of classic of a blighted property, we'd had issues with vehicles, pretty much almost everything on the list. It'd been a long-term case. This is, again, one on the left is the backyard. This is the other side of the front. And now this is what it looks like. It's in the process of being remodeled, and it'll be going up for sale. Another situation, property, vehicles, vegetation, we had problems with rodents, unpermitted structures, and now. All right, so before I came on, and my predecessor before me, code was kind of handled intermittently with various city staff. There had been a few people that kind of had come in, dabbled with a few cases, but when we came in in '17 and '18, then things really kind of took off. We tried to be very professional about how we're doing it, tracking it, and keeping track of everything. And there's a lot of cases. And I still have a few that are older cases. One of the things that we've been having to do, just because people kind of got used to stuff like, yeah, yeah, they send me stuff, nothing really happens. Some citations had been issued. I think Roger will say, I think for about 12 or 14 years, it was only $1,200 that was ever recouped back by the town. But once we came in, again, we follow a set process of how code enforcement and industry standard, due process of the law. And part of that is, and just today, I had a gentleman email me, oh, I got this citation. Is this because I didn't respond to the first two letters? Yes, that is how this works. So, it's not that we're looking to find people, but some of these cases are very extensive in the amount of time that we spend trying to get people into compliance, so it helps offset the expenses a bit. And if anybody has any questions, this is how you get ahold of me at Code, down at Town Hall. And if there's any questions, and then you can go to the last slide, just for that nice calming effect.
All right, thanks, Lee. Is there anybody? I guess we go here first. Do you go?
Sure.
Thank you, Lee. Looking forward to your presentation tonight, and, you know, I know how hard you work, and one of the things that I love about how you work is that you're, obviously, we're dealing with our community, and sometimes people, you know, need help in how to get things cleaned up, and I appreciate that you, you know, really take that to heart. And I know that's a special part of what makes you so great at your job, and so I appreciate that. And thank you so much for cleaning up all the areas that needed to be cleaned up. You're doing a great job. Thanks.
Well, and I will say, I just, again, I would like to give credit where credit's due. All of those, it's not that I came in and we did an abatement, and the town took on these duties and did the cleanup. It takes time sometimes with people, but this is all people doing their part in getting it done. It just sometimes takes a little bit to get people in motion.
Right.
But I appreciate the words. Thank you.
All right, we'll open that up to a public comment.
My name is Dave Dally. I live at 3815 Delmar Avenue. Speaking about code enforcement, I won't name names, but we've had a major problem on Delmar Avenue last year. We had a major fire where the house almost burned down and burned a neighborhood down. We have a person on Delmar that has over 200 cars on their property and garbage. He's a hoarder. He keeps bringing stuff in every day. I came down into the city, filed all the reports. All my old reports got thrown away for some reason. I've been here 23 years. I asked for all my complaints on this person, and all my complaints were gone, so I had to file all new ones. On the code enforcement, code enforcement is on a selective basis, because if code enforcement was being done, we wouldn't have this problem so close to my house. There hasn't been one car moved off of this property. He brings garbage to this property every day. And I see Lee out there a lot. She's out there with the fire marshal because the fire marshal got tired of me calling to find out what's he going to do about the neighborhood almost being down on a spontaneous combustion fire with nobody around. They sent five fire trucks to put out this fire because the guy is a hoarder. Still has over 100 cars. He has so many cars on his property that he bought the house next door, and now he's hoarding that property with cars and more garbage. I didn't see one picture of that on this thing of anything being done. And we don't need a code enforcement person. We need a real building inspector. And ever since John Kitts left and our city engineer, I think his name was Brian, the town of Loomis hasn't, has done zero to replace these people with full-time people that can address all the issues. There are more people with, doing work with no permits, like on Delmar Avenue. All the friends that, there are some people on Delmar Avenue who are friends with town council, who just got done doing two major remodels, four months on each house, sold the house without the house even legally split, tore up the road, put a culvert in illegally. Two days later, he tore the culvert out again to put a different culvert in, and your town people that work for Loomis called Carol and informed her of the thing, and I never seen Lee over there shutting down the job. I never seen Lee over at these two houses asking for a building permit. This guy did two major remodels on Delmar Avenue. He just got one done. He's been doing it for five or six months. I've never seen the town of Loomis out there at all. We all know who it is. It's the guy that owns a winery up and over in Loomis who bought Dean's Ranch and stole 15 acres of water from Dean's Ranch to his winery and devalued the whole properties on Delmar Avenue.
All right, Dave, thanks.
Hi, Pam Blake Angelo Drive. I just want to say, Lee is great. She came to my house last year. She got a major doggy fix, and I did notice the three-foot retaining wall. I have 70 feet of a three-foot retaining wall that I put in 20 years ago. Of course, I was much younger, so when she was at the house, we jumped the three-foot retaining wall. So, after she left, I have slowly dropped that three-foot retaining wall to two and a half feet. I could do it two feet, it'd be great, but I got dirt. I know code enforcement doesn't drive around looking, you know, for problems and stuff, and I could drive down my street and go like, up, 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 but it doesn't, you know, affect me, so I don't say anything. But I did mention, I think at the last meeting, about, I see so many motorhomes and trailers just parked on the street, parked around Angelo Drive and Terrace Parkway. It's just been sitting there for months. They finally, they finally moved it, you know? And so I did bring up the motorhomes and the trailers. Sometimes I see the motorhomes with the plug and stuff like that, but they're not there for more than, you know, two weeks. I was referred to PCOS over there, but I haven't done anything about it. So, that'd be a question for them if they drive around and can put tickets on these cars, so they need to be moved every three days. And the fines collected, do they just go to the general, the general fund? So, that's it. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Pam. Is there anybody on Zoom?
Jean, go ahead.
First of all, thank you for the work you're doing. One of your slides mentioned incentivized resolutions. What kind of incentives are there besides the threat of a fine, I suppose, in the end? But what kind of incentives do you use to encourage people?
Can we have...
Just come in.
Hi, thank you for the question. In that case, we did have to resort to citations. We always try to work with people first. We give people ample warning. You get a notice violation, then an intent to cite before we do citations. So, in that case, they were not wanting to comply, but once citations started, then that was the motivation for them to, you know, pack up and move off.
All right, thank you.
Sonia, go ahead. Lee.
Hi, I'm just... Hello?
No, go, sorry, Sonia, go ahead.
Oh, I'm just curious if our code enforcement officer works part-time or full-time, and how many hours a week does the code enforcement officer work? Thank you.
So, Lee is a consultant that works for the town two days a week.
Two full days?
Two full days a week.
All right.
And Eva, go ahead.
Hi, Sonia kind of asked my first question. My second question, I know there was a graph up there on the caseload and backlog. So, then my question becomes, you know, are we allowing enough hours per week to keep up with or get into this catch-up mode where, you know, we, complaints were stacked and not dealt with during COVID and stuff? So, I'm just curious what the backlog is and if there's enough hours being given to code enforcement.
Yeah, why don't you come up? Thank you.
With COVID, there definitely were some changes. It took a little bit to sort of recoup because due to the duration of time, legally, I had to go back and start the cases back over. I couldn't have warned somebody, said I was going to cite them. We have an almost two-year window with COVID, and then circle back and then start citing them. So, had to do a lot of backtracking. But we're in a position right now where I've got the caseload in a pretty manageable space. We are complaint-driven. I am not driving around looking for things. Now, if something comes to my attention that is an immediate life safety issue and needs to be addressed for safety reasons, we will address it, but I am not looking for work. I have more than enough work. There are some cases that, due to the nature, maybe sometimes the severity or complexity of things, that do take time. So, some of those cases sit on the books for a while, but in fact, I just closed one of my oldest ones, which was from 2013, and was quite happy to be able to close that. So, some of these just take time. Again, working with people, even in a citation process, does sometimes take time for people to get motivated enough or to get things in place for them to move forward.
Is there anybody else? All right. So, yeah. You see them file. Okay. All right, we're going to move on to item 15, Compliance with Surplus Land Act for 3800 Taylor Road Development.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So, as council knows, staff was given direction back, I think summertime, to move forward with the disposition of the WW molding lot through the release of an RFP. And since that time, we've been, we've realized that we need to follow the Surplus Land Act, which is a state law that says cities, towns, counties can't dispose of property, town-owned property, unless you declare it surplus, which is the action that's before you tonight. Once you declare it surplus, we have to make it available to affordable housing developers for... to affordable housing developers for a period of 60 days. If we get an affordable housing developer who wants to look at potentially buying the property, we need to negotiate in good faith for 90 days. And after that period is done, then we can either, it either is sold to the affordable housing developer or we could sell it for the purpose that we've been looking at through this whole time we're doing commercial development. So it's a, it's a frankly, super complex law. Trying to get, wager your way through this, the affordable housing developer, there's a list, a spreadsheet that we need to submit to HCD. If we don't follow the process, then we run the risk of paying a 30% on the price, sales price, fine, which we obviously don't want to do. And so the action before you tonight is to start this whole thing forward by passing the attached resolution that declares the property surplus, which will then trigger staff releasing it to affordable housing developers to see if anybody would like to purchase it for affordable housing. That's kind of the long and the short of it. There's a, an attachment in your packet that's like an overview of the Surplus Land Act compliance requirements. I'm not going to try to pretend I'm an attorney, and I'll turn it over to Jeff if you have specific questions about that kind of stuff. So I can answer questions if you have them.
Questions?
So when we sent this out originally for RFP, we, we did kind of a long and short of this process. And I know that the law has changed somewhat, and that's why we're at this again, correct?
Right. So the first time we did this, the surplus land act statute was not as rigid as it is now as part of the legislature's efforts over the last few years to produce additional housing, typically to require local governments to do things to produce additional housing. One of the things they've tightened up on is surplus land. So where we used to be able to fairly easily find property to be exempt from the statute, now it's much more difficult to do that.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, is there anybody in the public that would like to comment on item number 15?
Good evening, Dave Dally again. If it's considered surplus land, why don't we use the land for a new fire department? Don't you think Loomis, don't you think the town of Loomis deserves and needs a new fire department? If it's surplus land, I've been here 23 years, we still have the same little, the same little fire department. If we have surplus land, why can't we use it for the fire department? And two, stop calling it affordable housing and call it low-income housing and low, low-income housing, because that's what you're pushing in Loomis. And Loomis doesn't want it. I know it's on the books, the state of California made you put it on the book, but you don't have to act on it for eight years. So why don't you just leave it on the books and leave it alone? I think we should use that land for a fire department. I think the people of Loomis deserve a new fire department. If you want to do something good for the people, and we have surplus land, as you call it, we should use it for a new fire department because the steel structure is already there. I've been a contractor for almost 40 years, more experienced than anybody on the staff in construction. The steel structure is already there, and that would save a lot of money. And if you use that property, it is big enough for a good enough fire department to where we might even get another fire truck. Thank you.
Go ahead, Dave.
David Ring, 3486 Delmar. If it gets picked up by an affordable housing developer, my question is, do they still need to adhere to our zoning codes? Because it's currently zoned as general, commercial. And I was, would that mean we'd get some commercial with it? Or does that mean that we have only housing coming out of it? Thank you.
I actually looked at this this morning. It's actually zoned CC, not GC. And CC has multifamily is allowed with a use permit. It's also mixed use is allowed, just a permit by permitted right. So could do mixed use, could be just straight housing. It could end up, I mean, honestly, I think that we just need to wait and see what happens if an affordable housing developer picks it up or not, if council goes that direction.
All right, is there anybody on Zoom?
Go ahead.
Thank you. My question is, if this is picked up for affordable housing, then does that reduce the total number of affordable housing that the town would be required to have?
It would offset the amount that we're required to build, yes. It would count towards our Reno numbers, yes. Assuming that it's built as low, very low.
Okay. Anybody else?
That's it.
All right. So.
Do you want to entertain a motion?
Want to entertain a motion, please.
Okay, move staff recommended action.
I'll second.
Can we get a roll call, please? Councilmember Baker?
Aye.
Councilmember Duncan?
Aye.
Councilmember Cartwright?
Aye.
Councilmember Clark Creutz?
Yes.
Mayor Nysley?
Yes.
Okay, we will move on to council committee reports. And I'll go this way. Do you have any, Jeff? No? Okay. Brian?
I have nothing exciting to talk about.
Okay. No?
Okay, I only wanted to say that I am meeting with librarian Sarah, and we are going to start taking that report out to all of the PTCs and get the word out about the library. But that's, that's the only thing, that's the only committee that I have any report on at this time. So adjourn.